So be it.
Second. Move to second, all those in favor? Meeting is in order. First thing on the agenda is the per diem firefighter's EMS job description. I'm told that was a question from last meeting and I'm told that you had a question.
Yes.
So, go ahead.
Well, I didn't get an answer yet.
Oh, okay. I'm here now. I wasn't here. Yeah, go ahead.
If I could just bring everyone up to speed on this. Last year, last meeting, we tried to bring forward, we brought forward the per diem firefighter one, EMT one, job description. And Ricky had a question about why was it firefighter one and EMT one? Why wasn't it just EMT one? Because the concern was some people might be EMTs but not firefighters and thus they'd be left out of the...
I think you're wrong.
That's what I understood you to say.
No. My question was, why couldn't you be, why did you have to be a firefighter one?
Here.
And, well, no, you can be, you've got to be both, you've got to be an EMT firefighter. But, my question was about the firefighter one. Because I came from the old school, which several others are that are not firefighter ones. We never, we went through the same stuff. Phil, I'm sure you're not one.
Well...
But, we're good enough to, you know, these guys are good enough to do weekend duty for peanuts. Um, why can't they, my question was, why couldn't they be, you know, per diem?
See the, I'll maybe give you a little, a little more history into that. When we started the whole full-time position and the per diem position, these both jobs were supposed to be done and we never got done. So, that's why I was trying to get this done because we want to maybe put an add-on there because we've got a couple of days where we haven't had coverage. We need a couple more to choose from. If we got a call saying sick, Travis is already off and we don't have a lot to call back and get a per diem in, and sure, I know, so. So, that's why I started with Terry and then moved over Dennis to get it in here. Um, no, it's, I don't know if we put firefighter one and two, but firefighter one is pretty much what we have. Firefighter one and two is the new program.
It's a new program, absolutely.
So, I mean, you could word it firefighter. I just feel we should, they should be able to drive a truck and be able to pump and do interior because they could be the only one here, is my thought. I mean, and that's how we, when we first established this whole, you know, full-time per diem, is that we'd have, we did back off on the medical part, saying they didn't have to be a paramedic. And on the full-time, we added a paramedic, we were moving that to just a, basic EMT could be that and a firefighter. But it could be squared firefighter one, which would be the old school, instead of firefighter one and two, which is a new, the new school of firefighting. We're still covered, I mean, I can still do interior, I did the old ones. As long as you have the criteria that the state looks for, that's considered firefighter one. And the new, the new protocol is firefighter one and two. I just feel we should have somebody that can get a truck there because some days it could be just that. If we do have a firefighter there. Because we're limiting us, because I got like two people on the rescue that are not firefighter, they're just strictly medical only. So, they wouldn't be able to cover the shift unless it was, I mean, we could put a wording in there if we can't fill it, you know, then as long as we have a medical person there, I don't...
I think you should be a firefighter one and a rescue person.
Right.
Being a firefighter one just didn't go good.
Yeah, and you could say, I mean, I'm pretty sure firefighter one is the old school, that's what I, I don't have firefighter one and two.
Yeah, you're like...
You're like us, it's been 30, 40 years.
I mean, just the way it's written right now, and I just use myself as an example.
Did you say firefighter one and two or is this...
No, just firefighter one. How I looked at it. Just say, instance, I wanted to take a shift. I mean, I'm an EMT and firefighter supposedly, but according to this, I couldn't take it because I'm not a firefighter one.
Well, I think, yeah, we'd want interior.
That's what the difference is.
Well, no, I'm firefighter one, I'm not, I'm interior.
Yeah, but you've got a certificate saying you're a firefighter one. I mean, I've had all the frigging training.
You just need the law, you need the state criteria checklist.
Whatever. I'm not gonna, you know, it doesn't, it isn't worth it, I'm not gonna take a shift. I just, I just feel bad because some of the older people that may want to do this can't do it.
Yeah, I wouldn't put the stipulation it'd be firefighter one and two. We have a firefighter one that's, you're still meeting all the laws of the old school, but, but that was interior, some of that. Because that's what I have.
I, I don't care.
I hate to have somebody sitting at the station not going to a call and leaving a fire truck because they're a different rescue only. But that's what I thought we were going with it, you know?
No, that's not where we was going with it.
I'd rather have them grab a pumper, at least get them set up. Even if they don't go interior, they get the truck there, set up, ready to go and hopefully some more people are showing up. So, is there a decision to be made on this?
No.
Your question's been answered?
No, I still don't agree with it, but it's fine. That's, you know, you, you haven't had enough, getting people now, but you're...
Do you want it worded firefighter?
I kinda like that, but if Danny says it's criteria that it's gonna be firefighter one because of the interior tax stuff, then it's gotta be. I can't, I can't...
By state regulations, they wouldn't do it, unless they had, that, you know, they're still gonna have the physical and test and then the, have that in their firefighter program. So, you're satisfied with it the way it is? Yeah, firefighter, I mean, firefighter one gets us into the old school people. Firefighter one and two, is anybody, like, we got a guy going to Oakland right now going through the firefighter one and two. So, he'll be firefighter one and two. For the most part, these people aren't coming in-house. Some maybe, but most of them are coming, we're getting, will be from out of town, they'll come in and, you know, get full-time, like, a gust of like stock, and he'll pick up a day and, you know, puzzles and all the one, but we didn't take away the criteria about being a paramedic and they just had to be an EMT.
Yeah, and that's, that's, full-time, I should be a paramedic.
My biggest reason to get this job description though, so we put it out and get a few more per diem people.
I'm fine with it, go ahead with it.
Well, is there vote required on this? Do we have to accept it?
You have to, you have to accept the descriptions, I do have.
Yes.
Then I'm looking for a, for a...
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion to second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Go for it.
Thank you, Dan.
You would train a lot of people.
Yes.
Friends of the, well, actually New Business, Friends of the Belgrade Library Contract Renewal. And that's in the book, I believe. Is there change in this contract?
There's nothing to change.
Nothing changed.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to accept the contract.
I'll second.
Moved to second. Moved to second and to accept the contract the way it is? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Announced. We have appointments, we have a plumbing inspector, and code enforcement officer Gary Fuller. I take it this is reappointment?
Yes, it was supposed to have been done earlier in the year January, I think it was.
I'll make that motion.
It was something overlooked, yeah, so I'll second that.
Moved to second, did we accept that nomination? Any discussion? All those in favor? Announced, tax collector Nick Poole.
Move acceptance.
Is he ready for this?
He's pretty close. Yep.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Moved to second, any discussion? All those in favor? Uh, and now we come to interim town clerk, which we just added today, and I'll ask Dennis to go ahead and talk a little about that.
Yeah, we're, as you know, we're looking for another town clerk. Carol, Cheryl, not Carol. Cheryl is currently acting on a per diem basis, but she's looking not to work as much in any case. So, I'm asking that we appoint Anthony as the interim town clerk. Of course, we'll see how that goes, but right now, we need to have someone appointed, so that's where we're going. Until we see what we get for town clerks, and we'll let him, we'll see what happens.
I'll make that motion.
It's been moved, is there a second? Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Announced. Uh, item two C under New Business, pine trees across a long route, eight and eleven on east end of Plan Five of the Pine Grove Cemetery. Go ahead.
Right, we have some pine trees that are in the state right away on the east side of the, and some of them are right on the line. There was a request from a citizen in Belgrade to the DOT that they preserve or save those pine trees. So, they called me up and said, "Well, what do you guys want to do with them?" We had this, this issue going on with this one person. And I said, "Well, you know, I think, Belgrade is a kind of likes trees, right?" I said, "But I can't make that decision." So, I forwarded the information and asked the cemetery committee to look at it. I talked to Gary Foss, who said that at the cemetery committee meeting, essentially they, they have already looked at trying to preserve the trees because the plan that you're, you're working on called for a road to be built right up by the pine trees, and you're moving it back so you don't cut up as many roots, is what I understood from Gary. So, but he's gonna take it to the cemetery committee, and I haven't heard from that yet because I don't think it meets 12.
Thirteen, right?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
And then, uh, so I, I asked them, they're gonna provide some input, and I thought I'd bring it to your attention so you can give some thought. The state is going to bring up landscape engineering, what they did with the bricks. They're gonna determine the, and they're gonna determine the health of the trees to give us a sense of how long they might live, and then...
There's a couple questionable now.
So, that's the situation there. I wanted to at least have you, have it in front of you, see what your comments might be, but it's not right yet. I thought it might be right by now, but it wasn't.
I guess one other question, next thing to talk on, then, would be, would they replace the trees? Something with a little bit of science to it? And applying whatever the cemetery committee has to have, I guess. There's a couple of the questionable, they probably should go.
The question I have is, how many are on the DOT?
They're willing to, they're willing to work with us if we want them to. They said that they can do some undergrounding, some stuff.
Because we are planning to leave them there until they die, or until they become a hazard, but I think the DOT looks at it as if, if they don't cut them, who's responsible?
Yeah.
So, we'll get more information, they have to come out with any more information.
Down the village, they'd offer to cut them and remove them for free, the ones that decided...
Right, they will do that.
If we go along with it now, if it's three years after they do their project, they're not gonna do it.
Right, they're not gonna do it.
And it's expensive for the big trees.
Responsibility, I think, is on the...
On the landlord.
So, I guess we're gonna wait for the cemetery committee.
I would like to get a report from the...
On the health of the trees. That's what we're, that's what I'm waiting for.
Okay.
I'll bring it back.
Road ordinances.
Right, as you remember, we were talking before, we had some complaints, and I don't know if I told everyone, the one person that complained about the parking, is the way that started this whole review, said that he had 35 more people come up to him and say, "You're on the record for this operation, maybe why don't you complain about, do something about it?" So anyhow, that's the complaint, it wasn't just a single person, as I understand it, because I went to the rectory last week. Anyhow, that started the parking issue, and then there were requests to close the road, and then of course we have the winter maintenance and sidewalks. The issue is, we can, as I explained last time, we can do, we can put up signs and stuff, but we may subject the, to some liability if we say we're gonna tow a car, we tow a car, suddenly we don't have any ordinance. We have to, state law requires us to have an ordinance about to do these things, even though it's in the sole prerogative of the select board, that you have to have a meeting if you're gonna pass an ordinance. So anyhow, as a result of the last board meeting, I grabbed another ordinance, I passed it out to you guys after I grabbed it, but I also gave it to the road committee to review. And we reviewed, I was at the road committee meeting, we reviewed it, and so now the question is, do you want to move forward on it for a public meeting, which could be at the next select board meeting, if you want, we'll advertise it. And then at that meeting, if there's no comments and you can, want to continue to move forward, you can then adopt the ordinance without any further input and discussion. So, there's three things in here that it does.
Can I get a motion to accept this?
I'll make it.
And then we'll open discussion on it. You moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
There's already signs up down to the beach already, I was down there today.
Morris put them up. Morris put the one sign up.
No, but, no, but they're on the other side of those.
That's from...
When did he put them up, just lately?
No, he put them up a while back because people were blocking the road. And so, he put the no parking sign on that side of the road because the people were blocking the road, the emergency vehicles were gonna get through.
Well, Christ, that's Belgrade Lakes. Did you, you should have gone up there Fourth of July, or no, the Third of July. You couldn't even get down to the street.
Not this green, I was there.
On the Third too? I mean, I'm top of the Third. This is not even the Fourth of July. My question is, is that gonna be in effect up there too, so cars can be towed out of there?
If, if, if you, one, you can't do anything.
I know.
Two, will it be a fact, you could specify where you want parking locations to be, so that you can control the parking? You can specify the locations you want to park.
You couldn't have got a fire truck down through there. It was terrible.
Where's this at?
Right in the village.
Oh, Village on Sunday.
The Third, this is on the Third.
You couldn't get through, there was an ambulance down there.
In fact, I come through with a truck, and I had to stop every car to let them through because I couldn't, I couldn't get through.
I got a question about this ordinance. Is this something also you're looking at, is this on only town roads or state roads? Because your other issue we still have is community.
You have it on state, if you have an ordinance, the state, and you need parking spaces in, you have a rule of decision, you have the authority, they will put the first...
My issue is down, and I see it every time, we've already had one fatal there, and we're gonna have another one. So, every time you have a function out at the community center, they don't cone it off like they should, and people can't see, and I'm wondering if that's another place you guys want to look at? Because we had one fatal there, somebody pulling on it.
We, we thought we had that solved, because that fatal occurred in 2009 when I was here, as town manager. We put those big signs up, they're supposed to be 200 foot away from the driveway, so both the person walking toward his car can see that up the road. But apparently, the private event people that put those signs up, bring it right up, it doesn't, it's useless. So, I told Valencia and Phil, you have, they have to go up and they have to go up.
Well, the slow wood bed sign should be that way back up the road, I'm talking about coning out.
Coning that area, yes.
Because you can't, they park in and they park all the way around both sides, and the people are creeping out, and that's what that guy did.
Exactly.
And he tried to, he gunned it, and he didn't see a gun.
Those areas are supposed to be combed, and why, they just haven't followed the...
I was bringing it, I didn't know if that would be covering it too, because that really, I brought it up many times.
Well, certainly, they could say no parking and put no parking signs in there. That would be enforced by the state authorities, well, it's back in the...
That's the reason why we really need to do this, that way, when we have these issues and you can do something, do something.
Your sign that the dry hydrant, even though it's branded a sign, has no effect.
Yeah, we're gonna paint the curbs and stuff, we gotta get the state to do it by then.
Well, if we give an ordinance, they said they put the signs in on 27.
The state, please have their sign right in front of it the other day.
I called the sheriff.
Oh, sure, yeah.
I called Cal and said, "Could you do that?"
You know, here we have a, this people are...
I think we need to figure, I, I've read the ordinance, I thought it was well-written, I thought it answered all the questions. Personally, I'd like to see us go ahead with this, I think it's needed. Somebody's gonna die in Belgrade Lakes one of these days, just because maybe you can't get you guys through, you can't get an EMS through, it's horrible.
Well, the ambulance went the trips the other day, and the rescue wagon after, and they just, it was a mess.
Yeah.
The, the real issue in the situations, I'm just gonna say it, like you're talking about, the village. You're not gonna, unless you ask the code enforcement officer or me, or, of course, in the village, it's on 27, so you could get the state authorities to come out. But if it's blocking the highway like that, you might ask me to go down, and I can try to get the cars towed and all of that, but it's gonna be difficult. But having said that, at least it gives you a handle. Uh, the other issue in here besides parking and road noise is the issue of winter maintenance. And that may be the one that creates some issues, but that's where, we essentially say that anyone abutting the property of the, the sidewalk that we put in, the sidewalk we put in, either a commercial enterprise or business enterprise or a residential must clean the sidewalk and retain. And it gives you a specified number of hours after someone, you have to go and straighten them.
I think we've addressed that before with Belgrade Lakes. I mean, that makes sense.
So, that's the ordinance, that'll give you the authority to...
But who's gonna enforce this?
Again, it always comes back to the town manager or the code enforcement, you delegate that authority. But that's where it comes back to.
I think in the lakes, in the wintertime, I think unless there's an issue arises, should be life for you, it always has been. Your old end sidewalks, everything is gone, nobody's using anything up there. After the stroll, you know, during that timeframe, then you could say, "Hey, you know, you gotta clear these sidewalks because there's an event going on." But other than that, just...
I just, you just ignore it, let the real issue go, if someone falls against or blocks the road and the sidewalk hasn't been maintained, there is a...
But liability goes back to the, to the business of the owner?
It should go back against them with this ordinance. I can check on that, that's what I understand.
More discussion? We have a motion on the table that probably needs to be amended to have this presented at the next meeting as the public hearing, if we're going to accept it.
I'll make the amendment.
Get that, Nick? Second.
Motion should be, public hearing, and then we can make a motion.
Okay, that's...
Do we need a hearing, or do we just do it at the beginning of the select board meeting?
It says public hearing.
Public hearing.
I'm gonna throw a little dagger into this. You mean to tell me you're gonna send either you down or code enforcement down to that beach to have kids, cars moved, that may be in the next house that are either intoxicated or under the influence, and tell them to move the car? That's not even a safe situation.
What I would do, what I would do is have the sign corrupted, say, "This is the day you're sold, for whatever we want, the hours of operation we want. Any cars parked beyond that that aren't using the beach are subject to being towed at the owner's expense." All right? Clearly, that the owners of the AB and B business know that, and, and you probably have to tow them once. I'm not gonna go down there and someone's drunk and...
But you don't know that until you get there.
The thing is, he doesn't need to go there. All you need to do is call the guy to tow coach, we got a guy down here, go tow, he don't give a shit about this.
Doesn't the beach close in, the beach closes at sundown anyway, doesn't it?
It's supposed to close at sundown.
I know, that sounds...
Now, I mean, it looks like it's dangerous, you're gonna get stady's involved anyway. You're gonna call state police.
But that's not where it stops. I mean, today's world, I mean, they're gonna find out that the town had them vehicles haul or whatever. You don't think they're gonna be knocking on this door?
Maybe.
Yeah, and I mean, people are nuts now.
Yeah, towns go through that, all, every, every town. I mean, this, I, I got a large part of this ordinance out of a small town in Western Maine.
I'm sure you can cover that, because I, just because I, I thought that.
I'm not, I'm not going to rein that the wheel.
No, and I know that, you shouldn't.
So, so, so that, they deal with this. I mean, what this does is it gives you a handle. If you don't have it, you don't have a handle. The real problem with that particular issue, there were other parking lots, but the real problem with that particular issue is you have a gentleman who's got a B and B business who's commercialized a public parking lot that's for specific use. He's commercialized it by saying, "You can park there. You know, I have that B and B, but you can park there, and we have no way of patrolling it right now." So, that's the issue I see with it. And you have beach, people that use beaches that can't park there as a result.
Okay, back to the, to the business at hand.
A little question.
Question's been called for. Uh, I still think that the motion probably should be to have a public hearing on this ordinance. So, you want to amend the motion?
I'll amend the amendment.
Or withdraw your motion and make a new motion?
All right, I'll withdraw the motion, we'll make a new motion, that we have a public hearing on the issue and that it be at the next, before the next select board meeting, and, and that we, we pass the ordinance.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, next item on the business, the sand and salt RFP.
You know, the sand and salt RFP is in your book, it is one change that I, any recommendation from my discussion with Dave Stevens. On the first paragraph at the end of the sentence, it says, "No later than September 29th of each year." He said, "Give me until whoever gets this contract, give them until the middle of October." So, I essentially put the language, "No later than mid-October of each year."
Who is that, Mr.?
Well, I talked to Dave Stevens, who currently has the contract. He says sometimes they don't have the salt available prior to that, so they can get it all up. But just wanted to let me know that it should be a couple weeks later.
So, this, this would be amended?
Yeah, I have the amended version, I just didn't put it in here.
It's just the date, it's just the date you're amending.
Just the, yeah.
What's the date go to?
It said, "No later than September 29th" is what it has, and when I put on it, "No later than mid-October of each year."
Yeah, that sounds good.
And this was also agreed by the, yeah, question from the road committee, remember, at the discussion, there was also some concern about quality as well as cost. The RFP specified acceptable quality as well as price.
You mean the salt?
Yeah.
That's not gonna be ending on salt.
The salt is not an issue, this is, this is the mixing of the salt and provision of the sand.
Okay.
The salt is a separate issue, we're going on the contract, we, we, we've got two price books on that that we have for, and we're gonna give the one that we're gonna look at. We had a problem with the DOT provider, that was the concern about one of the, one of the providers.
Hard cross is fault.
It clogged it in the other flow.
And a lot of water. Hard cross is the other provider that people turn to, very satisfied with his good salt. So, we'll see which one comes in and which one's lost. If the lowest bid is the poor salt, I'll recommend the better salt.
As long as the, the request for proposal specifies quality and cost.
Can I get a motion to accept the RFP as amended? Boomed, do I have a second?
Yep.
Moved and seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor? It's accepted.
Who put this out as amended? Just get it to the chairman.
Next item on the agenda is Travis Mills Foundation Fire Rescue Issues. Sir? Um, I just wanted to bring this up, see your thoughts. I've got a few things over there, open on in our town, the main house is in Rome, the Mount Vernon has the light fire line moved up through there somewhere, so it's two different towns. I mean, the question was, they have a lot of people there with, you know, handicapped, you know, you know, all kinds of different stuff going on with them. And if there's a rescue call, and/or fire, that would be automatic mutual aid to them. My question was, if I was not a big deal with rescue, I mean, it's just a band-aid call, I didn't feel that we probably want to be running over there. And I just wanted to get your guys' thoughts on that, because it's really not in our town, they're asking for assistance when they have people there.
But wouldn't Rome ask for that? It's in Rome, right, that, Belgrade?
Yeah, we, we met with Rome, Gary and Dana, we met over there a couple times, just to
Yeah, we, we met with Rome, Gary and Dana, we met over there a couple times, just to look at the facility and...
So basically a mutual aid call?
Correct.
Is Rome asking for this, or is this...
Rome and Mount Vernon.
Both of them are, but...
Cause they're ready.
For a fire, you would go, right?
Well, we're automatic with Rome, we haven't usually agreed with Mount Vernon over a non-call basis with them. So, fire is really not a problem, it's the rescue more than anything, I don't think.
I guess, my take on this whole thing is, we pay a full-time unit key, right? And if we were to enter into something like this, unless we have an agreement to pay for the call, then Delta would be taking on additional responsibilities that aren't the residence of Delta's responsibilities under a mutual aid contract. With fire, everyone comes and helps everyone, even though, as I understand, Rome is less forthcoming with support to our fire program. We might have to look at that.
That's why I figured this would roll into more of that, because we do, do... I think a mutual aid agreement, I have to read it in full, is pretty much for fire only, I don't, rescue was not, unless it was a serious P I, I mean, we've always done that as community service. I don't think rescue was, but, we go to some town, all in other towns, but it's hard to keep track of, you know, we got, we keep track, but it's hard to say, okay, we went ten times this year to them, but we might only gone two to this town, they might have come to us fifteen times, you know, we don't...
That property sits in Mount Vernon and Rome?
There's two buildings, the big new building's Rome, across the street and down on the water is Mount Vernon. There's a new building down there, renovated building, so they're gonna be down on the water, so there could be a water rescue or something like that down there. And then the big building is where they're all gonna be staying, eating, whatever.
They have a golf cart path that goes between...
DOT just put a sign, I don't be done across who there, but they put a blinking light, that they push a button so they can get across, they have a golf cart without getting, hopefully not getting hit. It's right at the crest of a hill, when we walk it, you can see both ways in pretty good direction.
So what would you like to do?
I mean, I just don't wanna be, us be the primary, every call is gonna be, as we say, the town, we have scanner people that listen, I mean, they hear us going down the town a lot. It's been brought up in the past, we've dealt with it.
Oh, yeah.
Jeff dealt with it, and I've dealt with it, and, I mean, I just want the okay, that if you say okay, then we're all set, that, you know, we're good to go.
Do you know of anyone, any town that has a similar type of breach event, where they actually pay for, like, for this rescue service? They pay on a per-call basis?
I know, I know.
Batfield does Benton.
Yeah, they, they cover their town.
They cover the town of Benton, Batfield does.
I mean, that might be a way to go, that way, um...
My idea was just to have, I mean, if you have a code or somebody drowning, a major call.
Serious call.
Yeah, but if, if you've got just a band-aid call, I fall down, I hurt my hip, I just don't think we should be going.
That's where I'm thinking, either that or they pay for...
I mean, cause there's, you are, I mean, and then they had the question, because we have two ambulance services, cause Mount Vernon does Winthrop, and they man a truck during the day in Reedfield, but at nighttime they're gonna be coming from Winthrop. And Delta was there that day when we were meeting, and they, they weren't, they didn't wanna come to Mount Vernon, but they could do Rome, because they cover Rome. Who's gonna go, which ambulance service, and they both didn't wanna get there, and only have one transport, the airlines go on down all the way there.
See, and they're not at Winthrop, I mean Reedfield all the time, they're supposed to be, but they never are.
Right, and they're only supposed to be until five o'clock.
And they're never there, I mean...
I don't, I don't know what they ended up fighting, no, finishing that discussion.
So your druthers are, if it's a fire or an emergency, you'll go? Yeah, it's band-aid, you don't wanna go.
Yeah, I, I just think it's better for our town, I mean, if you got your, you have people, we have scanner people, it sums up. I'm surprised some other things haven't been brought up, but it just...
We're gonna be the duty...
Did we go to Rome now on rescue call, if they go? If they come help us, if we...
You can be the duty dog no matter what you do, because this Travis Mills Foundation is a big, and if we say no, you know, it's gonna just... But I understand, I, I'm a...
I mean, I don't wanna hurt our relationship with Mount Vernon either, because in Rome, I mean, cause when we need help, they, they bring help to us and...
Do Roman, no, go ahead, do Roman, Mount Vernon have rescue?
Yes, Rome has.
Well, yeah, it's just like any other town, and if we didn't have our full-timer and our per diem during the day, we wouldn't have anybody at our calls.
Cause I understand that we're not gonna say no. We aren't gonna go put a band-aid on somebody's finger, or take a broken arm to the hospital, or something like that.
It comes in as a serious call.
Serious call.
And that's kind of what we, I mean, Rome, we can just do a little bit more sometimes, but if, you know, they got a code, somebody difficulty breathing, you know, chest problem, or bad accident. I mean, we'll call in Oakland, we've had bad fatal accidents, and we've called in Oakland and stuff to help assist us on rescue.
Do we need to go down this, or can we just say?
I think that's...
It's his decision.
His decision.
I like it.
I just didn't want you guys, cause you're probably getting the feedback, if somebody hears us going over there, you know.
Do you track how many times you go to specific calls, so we know how many times you go to Rome, or how many times...
So you're telling a boy?
Yeah, that's a total review.
No.
No? You gotta read that down.
It's hard to read the... It's hard to, everybody says, well, they, we go to them more than we ever, yeah, but it's, it's hard to keep track, oh, we're gonna go there ten times, probably, they're gonna go ten times. You're never gonna be even on that.
I just wanna be able to answer a question if I can.
Right, you say on one of my favorite television shows, Andrew, Andrew.
Right, I just wanted you to be aware that, I went to a couple meetings, I said, "I need to talk to Ryan Slough, and I don't want them to be blindsided with this and that."
You tell them it was your decision and stick it to them.
That's right. But I, I would discuss, I mean, all like, like with Gary now with Rome, I mean, he'll call and say, "Hey, I've had nobody, it sounds bad, can you, can you go?"
We will back you.
I mean, that could be a later issue down the road.
You could ask, is there blood involved, is there a lot of blood?
I mean, I definitely water rescue, you guys was, you know, long arms, no legs.
We got a new guy that lives up there.
War on eighty-one, bet. Five hundred forty-two thousand five dollars and ninety-two cents.
That's a different one.
You got a different warrant?
Yeah, oh, I had, must be two.
Is there two warrants?
No, I only have one.
This is the, that, that book may not be this one.
Okay, I'll make that, yep, that's fine.
This is the one.
Okay.
That's a four. For a bunch of things, or one thing?
This is the one that you have there, plus probably something else, one is a smaller number?
I don't know, if it's a, if it's a special warrant or a separate warrant.
No, this is the one.
I thought it was forty-two, but I read it wrong, it is five forty-two.
Five forty-two, is it right?
Yeah, it is right, no, I, I read it wrong.
Okay.
I'm fine, I'll make that second pass.
A motion to accept, please?
So be it.
At second?
Second.
Boo is the second, is there any discussion?
We got a few here.
Okay, Belgrade Lakes Region, number three nine four on the first page, I assume that's for the fireworks, but did we not have that on our warrant, previous warrant?
Well, I, I don't remember being on the previous warrant, you may have heard of that.
A previous one, I didn't say the.
We can check that in.
But it says town meeting too, it doesn't say what it is.
Well, it was approved at the town meeting, I thought, that's what I assumed.
It's from the town meeting, yes.
That's what I assumed.
I didn't think so, but I didn't, I wasn't here.
I thought that went to the business group, that's why I was a little...
Well, they submitted bill.
Well, it's Belgrade Lakes Regional Business Association, something like that.
That's the name of the group.
That's the name of it, not just Belgrade Lakes.
Belgrade Lakes Regional Business Group, something like that, it's just abbreviated here.
More discussion, please.
You got the next, I, I got a question on the next one down, from the lawyer. We got quite a few Ps on there, especially about town meeting, I wonder what...
I did look at that, you've got the thing, there were a number of things, including, there, I don't know who Dwayne Be, uh, Dwayne Beetle proceedings are, I don't know what they were about, but apparently it was a lawsuit.
Wasn't that, I think that was the, uh...
Was that the payment, the payment of land, was that the, the land that was sold?
Yeah. Was sold, and there were owners besides that, and the family was still there.
That was all taken care of.
Six one twenty-five.
Did I say town meeting?
Yeah, but did, did they bill us for that at the time, that was this year?
Oh, that's just, love says town meeting.
Yeah, so there was discussions about the, yeah, it is the town meeting too, I'm just gonna find the...
Well, I mean, that Dwayne Beetle thing was like twenty-one dollars.
Here's the...
Yeah, oh, seventy-one dollars.
So, here are the issues, there were telephone call and email correspondence with Kerry regarding Friends of Belgrade Lake Village, recent, review of recent findings on Docket and Dwayne Beetle proceedings, I don't know if that's, I don't know what that is. Then there was, well, total amount between those, I hear it's a warrant. January twelfth seventeen, there was a consultation regarding a legal issue of one of the petitions for appropriations.
Ah, yeah, I remember that one.
There was a research done for a warrant petition issue, called it town.
He's done a fair amount of work.
Town manager and draft advisory regarding the same, and he revised and made advisory to town, that's the consultation regarding MDOT project and legal process requirements. Finalization of client advisory email sent same to the client. The research needed for town meeting approval for donations called with town manager. He gets, apparently...
That was the...
A lot of money.
Think of the late, the...
Friends of Belgrade Lakes money.
Draft review and revise email response and warrant order regarding starting walk improvements, revise and finalize and send email on acceptance of conditional gifts. All that added up to two thousand four hundred thirty dollars.
They sound like, the amount, just telephone calls, so when they call, call up and ask the question.
It's a fifteen minute, every, my understanding, I, I'll check this, my understanding is that he bills the fifteen minutes even if it's one.
Right.
And he gets somewhere around three hundred dollars in that one.
I was gonna say five hundred, but probably...
Three, it's around three.
I'm just not sure what this Dwayne Beetle...
I, I'll check and email.
I mean, it's not a lot of money, but I, I just wanna make sure.
Is Dwayne Beetle, right?
Yep.
There was a property thing, where the family said they still had rights to that property, we had sold that property.
I don't know if that was legal, Dwayne Beetle.
I don't know whether that was Beetle or not, yeah. More discussion, gentlemen.
I got, yeah, on page number three, Barbara, whatever her last name is.
We, we have...
She came and worked.
The reason for that was, Melanie had scheduled a vacation, starting on Sunday. And normally she would've come in on Sunday and taken off, but we had, remember the per diem person that we hired?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That person quit, so we were trying to get that person to come back for one hour to do, to do the payroll. She couldn't make it, she couldn't do it. We were looking all over for someone to come in, and the only one that was available to get the payroll out was...
Isn't that amazing?
More discussion. She came in and worked.
Doesn't matter. Still not happy.
We, we weren't happy either, but I wasn't going to say to, uh...
I know.
Melanie, you can't go after you scheduled, she had already...
I would've told her, got a job.
Yeah, I know, I know what you're saying, I know.
I'm just, because, and I just don't wanna say it.
More discussion.
He'll talk cleaning here, I see we've got two bills for them this time.
One was for window washing, apparently that was done.
They don't do that with the eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars?
Well, I assume that's all part of the contract, but that was a separate billing, I assume.
I don't think that was to be included in cleaning, that would be an extra pay.
It was an extra, but I've got, I, I have a, a big, under town manager updates, I'll be...
Nope, that's fine. You wanna get in on some of these?
Well, we've, we've done over most of them.
Now, the overhead door company, it's got sand and salt contract, what, that...
Why do people keep hitting the damn door?
Well, it's probably just maintenance on it, but shouldn't that be, why would that be sand and salt contract, why wouldn't that be the sand and salt building or...
Facilities.
Facilities.
So it should be facility.
I mean, I, I just, I think it might be under the wrong heading, that's my only...
What check number was that?
On...
Three sixty-seven, page five.
Yeah, page five, it's under overhead door company.
Okay, that's check number one six one seven six, two hundred and fifty, is that what you're looking at?
Yes.
Okay, I'll check with that.
Says facilities.
But it says sand and salt should, sand and salt contract.
Well, that may have been the contractor, they hit the door, I don't know, I'll check with Melanie on that.
I don't even know if it was hit.
Do they have a service contract to maintain?
I think they do all the...
That's what they mean.
It may be, but, but it says sand and salt contracts.
Yeah, it's abbreviated for...
You'd think that would be in the facilities, blah, blah, blah.
It says facility, building, but it...
I said, down the bottom it does.
But it doesn't say it.
Okay, here's, here's the service overhead door for four P M on one door and operated completed by a security access. It's a maintenance issue.
Big door.
And it was... I will check with Melanie on why she could have hit the door.
I just, you know, I just didn't look right, I guess, it's fine.
Further discussion?
On page six, there are two library communications issues, they, what are the two, is that their, is that their security system, or the telephone, or what? Why do they have two?
Well, let me find out. So, that would be one six one eight.
Well, the difference amount.
No, they're close to the same, but they're different.
Looks like two different bills, if you...
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm wondering.
The bill didn't get paid, I would, I would say.
Okay.
One is from five, one is from seven.
Yeah.
Two different, two different, two, two months time, actually.
Probably didn't pay one...
It looks like that, yeah.
Maybe that's the answer.
Two fourteen depot road, there was a previous balance, and then there was a, there was a, I told you, what check number was that, one hundred? Was that one five?
One six one eight one, one eight six one eight one. According to this.
Library is eighty-four one seventy-one, okay, is that one, there's, yes, there's two bills here. I'm trying to figure out which ones.
See, I thought that was a dollar sign too.
There's two checks, one for, one for the hundred and fifty dollars, I guess, that was, that was totally, and then another one that's for... Twenty and two fifty-five thirty, here's the bill. Okay, that's the one seventy-one, okay. I assume that there was two bills that came in, one may not have been paid, and the other one was renewed more recently.
Gentlemen?
It's on my head.
Any more discussion?
Yeah.
All those in favor of accepting the warrant? Amendments, town manager.
Okay.
I am, before you get into that, I just wanna mention, there are several categories in here that have nothing but a title page. Now, one of them, you, you, we got the thing tonight, but there should be some information.
Oh, you're talking about...
Yeah, in the, in here, in the book.
In the book itself, wow.
Appointments, for instance.
Yeah, in the book, the, the... You would want the appointments...
Well, I, I, whatever it is, I'd like to have some information as to what it is we're gonna be doing. Doesn't have to be...
And the same is true for the conversation, I could've written something up for what Dan was gonna talk about. I just figured he'd be here, but that would, yeah, you're right.
But it's nice that we knew ahead of, we know ahead of it.
That's a fair point.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Danny.
Make sure it doesn't happen. I was just giving it the old...
You got that, Anthony? I told ya.
We'll work together.
I told him to watch him.
Okay, we talked about the Al Gore raising, that Sean, uh...
Grant.
Grant brought up last night. I passed, I sent you a number of email, a couple emails with some information on it, including video of what the boat raises look like, what standish has done, what they've told me, I give you a little summary of all of that. I just wanted to see if that was sufficient, John has not yet come in with the mask gathering ordinance, so I have nothing to say, but I wanted to make sure that was okay. If you need more information, I'll try to find, I talked to the town of Stan, Standish, they don't hit ball. They said that's inefficient wildlife, that's, we don't do anything. But I think that's because of the unique situation they have with little, whatever that lake is, Watchak Lake, they do it on Little Watchak Lake, and I think that that's because it's pretty much out of the way, it's not near the town, it doesn't bother them. That's my sense.
I know, I don't remember getting the stuff you sent around.
No, I don't, I don't.
Oh, yeah, I got sent it to...
He emailed it.
I got it.
Yep.
I did.
Well, I didn't get it.
Okay, I'll, I'll forward it to you again.
Send it, I don't, I don't recall it either, and I use the check everything you send.
I got it, thank you.
Three people got it, two people didn't get it, obviously.
You know why, because we're too negative.
Well, no, your names was on the email.
It was on the email.
Your names were there.
It didn't come through, that's all I'm saying, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be telling you.
Relax, he's okay, he's gonna give you one.
Oh, good.
Four, okay.
Boy. Where's Dan?
I'll start putting the return receipt request.
There you go. They'll either see it, or they'll...
I'm not gonna say I didn't get it if I really got it.
No, I, I, uh, the Ken Beck, uh, the Ken Workman Youth Sports, uh, I sent you an email also describing a situation, a safety situation, with the parking on both sides of the road, and working, I, I talked to the people that run that group, and they're, in fact, they'll see signings up this weekend so that there's no parking along the roads, they're putting it in a field for the tournament they're having. And I said, "I wanna work with them on getting signs established like we have for the events up at Belgrade," and some other issues, parking when they have just a little, you know, they don't have a big gathering. So, we're working together on that, I think we'll resolve the issue, I just wanted to update you and see if you have any work questions on that.
How many people are gonna be here for that tournament?
Well...
That's a lot.
I, well, I, I'll tell you what I did, I went by and I counted the cars, it was something like sixty-five, seventy cars.
And it's over?
And Belgrade Central has cars in there.
I did look at Belgrade Central, I just looked in the area with the parking, and I assumed, and I assumed that there was at least two or three people per car. So, there was about a hundred and eighty or so there, I, I, I did not tell them.
I'm just, you know, I'm getting it.
Yeah, the mask gathering ordinance, so...
The, the other thing is, I don't, I don't remember specifically the details of the contract we have with that group, but...
We have it, we have it.
Yeah, but does it allow for this type of thing without coming back to us? I mean, that's our, that's town property, and they, they use it via contract, they have a contract.
Right, I know, I, I didn't look for the, to, to resolve that type of question, but I did, I pulled out the contract.
Is the event over and done with now?
Uh, they have it, is it this weekend they're gonna have, or was it last week?
Last week.
Last week. They have it last two weekends.
That's something that maybe we could look at to see if, in the future. You get, you get, you get permission to use or a contract to use the property, it's like, like the, the contract we have with the Friends of the Library, if we decide to go in there and have a big old party or something, that's gonna be invited, we don't have the permission.
They think it's over, actually, they called up, and they said, "We don't believe it's gonna go over three hundred people, so we're not gonna fill up..." I said, "Well, I don't know, it's fine with me if you don't believe it."
They probably don't, because people are coming all day long, in and out of there.
Yeah, but it's supposed to be totaled, the ordinances, I thought. It'd be twelve number, is that how it reads?
I thought it had to be three hundred there.
Yeah, there, that's my.
Over time.
Check it again.
I think it does say three hundred people at the event per day.
Yeah, that's what I understood, but, but they said there wasn't. So what did they have going there?
What, what, what are we trying to do here now? We're gonna put a squeeze on down here now on the Hammonds and run that field?
No, not at all.
That's what the problem with the ordinances are. I mean, that was the big thing. There was an issue about, this is what's frustrating about some of the stuff. Then you end up pissing a whole bunch of residents that have done this for years and years and years, all because of an issue with loud noise up at the lakes. We passed this ordinance so we can deal with that. Now we're gonna put the screws.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, this is my opinion. I asked a question. All I did was ask a question. I didn't say run down there and take it to court.
Can I tell you why the whole issue came up in the first place? I received a couple of complaints about an accident that almost occurred down there where someone was walking across the road, opened up a door, tractor trailer was going down through it about forty-five miles an hour, and his car was pulling up, and he said, I almost hit the person that opened the door. The people were opening doors on both sides of the road constricting the lanes. So that's the reason why I even brought it up there, Tim. I wanted to see what they were gonna do. Talked to Danny and Danny. Danny was running the program and there's another gentleman that's gonna take over from him. They're working on, they said, here's what we're planning on doing. I said, that's good. He said, we already noticed that. We do not want any accidents. So we already noticed, and I said, that's good. We can work together on that, that's fine. So that's how the whole issue came up.
Yeah, the thing, 'cause you weren't at the road committee, but we was at the, we was at the road committee. And you already talked about how this ordinance is gonna give us the ability to have no parking or deal with issues down there. So all this had already previously been discussed. Now all of a sudden it comes back to, what was it, three hundred people there? Like, wow, okay, well, you know.
That's a mass gathering. That's already done. I don't, I, I just. I hear you.
Okay.
Well, there's never been any other problem there, has there? I mean, the parking sounds like a problem. That needs to be taken care of, but certainly a number of people there didn't seem.
My observation was the first day, I went down through there, they were parked on both sides of twenty-seven. It was unsafe. The second day, they were parking everybody in the field at Belgrade Central. There was nobody parked on either side of twenty-seven. It was, it was done right, and so that's.
So they took care of the problem?
Problem solved.
That's what I, I have email exchanges.
Yeah, big signs up, talk to Belgrade Central.
That's important, so.
Somebody spent a lot of money on.
So they, they don't wanna have accidents, and that's what they're working on. I said, that's fine. I said, I just, you know, I, I received complaints and I'm just bringing them up.
I got one, my final thing. Only, only person making an issue of this. I am not making an issue of this. I asked a question, period. I didn't suggest you should go run down and ticket them or do anything like that. I just asked a question. How many people were there? And when they do something like that, should they at least tell us about it beforehand? We do have a contract with them.
They called up and said, we, we don't believe we're triggering the mass gathering.
Go ahead, you answer my question.
Well, it sounds like if they had, they probably wouldn't fill out the form anyway, so.
Yeah, they did everything else.
It just seems to be a non-issue except for the parking part, which is important.
Which I wouldn't have known if I hadn't asked the question.
Okay. Handicap access. We're moving forward on that. We did not, I had told you previously, I couldn't find any money. I didn't realize that the cleaning contract had not gone into place until like April, so there was money there that could cover that. And we anticipate that because we didn't hire some, that's a difference. So anyhow, I told Danny to move forward on that, so at some point tonight. We have had Uriah's contracting servicing to try to look at the doors, see what the, we loosened them up a bit. Probably a bit too much, but anyhow, we're worth it enough. You will notice that the bathroom, the toilet door in the men's room no longer drops off if you lift up too hard. It's been fixed, but the problem with the fix was it didn't move the latch hatch. So I have to get it moved up so now you can lock it, but anyhow, it's slowly coming. So that's that. Recreation department, I sent an email talking about the desire to buoy off an area for safety, 'cause some boats were encroaching on the area. I, I raised the issue of permits. Are permits required? I said I'd check into it, I checked into it. From two thousand and ten on, permits were required and they didn't have them, so they filled out the permits incentive fee.
To the state, right?
So that's been taken care of. Cleaning contract, I talked to the cleaning lady and said, look, I don't understand why you're coming in on Mondays and Fridays in the summertime. Well, we don't have any traffic on Saturdays and Sundays. Why is it that you're cleaning, you only have one day? I said, I'm gonna talk, and she's had, she has some personal problems. Her husband is in the hospital with some serious illness. I said, look, take care of your personal problems. Focus on that in the next couple of weeks. I wanna talk to you about potentially rearranging the contract so we can save some money because there are budgetary issues we're concerned about. But I wanna take care of the, the building too. I don't like the fact that we have a thin film of dirt on the floors here, but I don't wanna spend a lot of money taking that to go off. So we're trying to find leaders or something they can use. But anyhow, that's an issue. So could I answer the question earlier about the cleaning contract? I have looked at the contract. She's willing to renegotiate it, and what we may do is go into Tuesday, Thursday. Maybe I'll have to bring her in an extra day, month or two, extra days a month in the wintertime if it really gets dirty. But she said the problem was that Tuesday nights we meet with the board. I said, well, just leave this area, go. And I'll have one of our maintenance guys come in real quickly to sweep it up if necessary. So we're gonna talk through that. I wanted to let you know that that's an area we're focusing on. Okay, did you all get the email that I sent about the RSU eighteen athletic field in the group that wants to have the board?
They did.
The school board. Spend three point eight million dollars, or actually allowing three point eight million dollar bond issue vote to the voters. That is in schedule for debate, potential vote next Wednesday, February twelfth, central office. I told them, I told Carl Garble, I told him my concerns, what I thought were your concerns, which I'm sure are probably better places to spend three point eight million dollars than the athletic field. I did, you all should've gotten an email from Rebecca Seale, 'cause I tried to get her, 'cause I wanted her to come to the meeting, but I was out Friday, Monday. But anyhow, there was an email that she sent out that pretty much explained that what they're hoping to do is that they're hoping to get the bond set out for vote so that they, they believe they can raise the majority of this money through big backers. So that's what Becky's email says. She said she didn't know where she was at on the book yet. But nonetheless, that's that whole thing in a nutshell. I'm gonna go to next Wednesday's school board meeting. I don't know what direction you want to provide me. If you want to go, you can all go. One of us can go, two of us can go, but I just thought I'd go just so I could hear it and maybe speak if there was something to say.
There is something to say.
How long ago did you send that email?
She sent that email out to.
This last weekend, right?
Yeah, right.
I don't know, she, I don't see your.
I didn't get it. I know that.
No, she said, I think she said she wasn't sure.
Tried to get the emails.
She wasn't sure that Rick had got it.
Here, get that to the.
She probably said, don't send it to Rick, 'cause he's too negative.
She didn't have your email.
There is a, in that is the, two twelve page is the slideshow that was presented by the group, so you have that plus.
But there is a slideshow from the boosters group.
I, but you should've gotten the one that I sent, Ricky, or I'm gonna have to do some tests to you. 'Cause I sent the whole, I sent the whole slideshow to you.
A three point eight billion is forty percent of what they need to bring the damn buildings up to where they should be as far as being safe to be in. So now we're gonna build a trap, a track.
You had the first thing right. They're gonna build a trap.
Track, well, one or the other.
Okay, so that's the issue. Let me know if you're gonna go, and Ricky and Mike, I'll do some tests with you to see.
I got Becky's, I got, I got the thing on.
You got Becky, but you haven't been getting mine, so I gotta.
Well, I've been getting, I just didn't get that one that you just talked.
Okay, I gotta find out why that happened. Now, so you have a black eye to your incoming email that doesn't let a large.
Unless it went, it may have gone to spam.
Nah, 'cause I check that all the time too. 'Cause I do get a lot of junk that goes in.
Here's a couple of issues that I wanna draw to your attention, I wanna try to resolve, and some money isn't spent maintenance. We don't have panic buttons for the clerks, the town clerks. There are panic buttons that if someone's getting rowdy or does a robbery or whatever, they're underneath the desk. They were up at the town office. Why they weren't brought down, I have no idea. I have, I have tried to find the contract with the town, I haven't found the contract with surveillance, seco surveillance, to see whether or not they were supposed to. But anyhow, I called them up. They said that they could put them in. It's ninety-five dollars an hour for the first half hour. It's ninety-five dollars, and then for a week or after that, it's ninety-five dollars. To install them hardwired, or they could bring in wireless in for about six hundred dollars, put in three wireless panic buttons.
But we found out wireless does not work here, because they tried wireless when we first, that's the way it was gonna do, so we didn't have to pay for another phone line. And it wasn't strong enough signal here.
Okay, so this is wireless from, from the button to the receiver.
That might work. Okay, I'm sorry.
They're gonna, the hardware, they're gonna have to install a hardware receiver that will then send it off to.
Nope, that's fine.
So I'm going to, before I do it, I'll let you guys know, but I, I think we should have those. The other thing.
Why are you checking? 'Cause that should've been part of.
I'm gonna check that question. I just couldn't find that particular contract in the building.
I remember it was discussed, but I don't remember why it wasn't.
I don't remember a discussion on the, on the wire, on the panic buttons.
We talked about panic buttons and cameras, but they didn't.
Cameras, cameras, I think we also should have two cameras pointing for the parking lot and driveway coming up.
I was talking about inside.
And two cameras inside. You can get those systems like.
Yeah, radios.
And all you do is continue to run over them. If something happens, you.
I think we have some stuff up at the transfer station.
Yeah, like you have at the transfer station. So we can buy the four cameras, I'm gonna, that, that ones are anywhere from three, they're actually dropping price pretty much, but when I first started looking at them, five, ten years ago. So I'm gonna look if we have money in terms of something like that installed. That's not a problem for you. The third issue is, we're required by law to keep personal information secure, so other people can't see it. You have a lot of people going in and out of there. It's open access essentially, because there's no blockages, large open area. I know that the basic design of the facility came from Green, if I'm not mistaken. Was it Green? And at Green, they do have these broad down gates, and I'm gonna look to see what kind of pricing is there. And maybe we can put it in the budget or something like.
There was supposed to be, there was supposed to be locks on these doors.
There are locks on these doors, but someone can, that guy can jump through the counter, over the counter. They can go over the counter. It's, it's pretty wide open. You, you, you don't know.
Yeah, you can get over the counter pretty easily.
But we had this, I thought we had, this is just thinking back. I thought when the meetings were gonna be in here, they were gonna come through this other door, not through the main office. Those doors were gonna be off limits. Wasn't that what we decided when they?
That may be, but you have other meetings also after hours.
Yeah, a lot of committee meetings up in that little room up there.
See, there was supposed, there was supposed to be a security key down at this door. There isn't one.
There's a, there's a.
There is a security. If you, if you enter that door, but it's, the light was off. It's right on the side wall. But anyhow, that's something. In the interim.
Is there a disarm pad there?
Yeah, right on this wall. In the interim, I told all the staff, I said, you have to put stuff either in drawer or have covers over, right? I don't want any, any personal information out because of subject to. People don't want. Well, there's liability issues, but we should be protecting our citizens' privacy. So that's something I'm looking at as well, just to let you know that. The other thing that I found that we don't have is, we have backup for whatever Trio operates, so Trio stuff is backed up, off site. I'm asked the company to provide a, the company Exponent, which is our I T provider. I said, give me this best business practice for a small town like ours for backup on the rest of the system. Right now, what we do is we take a drive, right? Plug it in every Friday. Plug it in every Friday, and then it's left on the desk or, no, it's locked on the desk or, you're supposed to be putting the vault, and I'll make sure that that happens. But there's no real off-site backup, and that's what you really should have. So I'm looking at that. I'm gonna try to cost out some other stuff. Their costs, I think, are a little high. They set up a proposal. I think it's a little high. Six hundred, seven hundred dollars for just a backup. So we'll check that out. I wanted to make you aware of it though. Okay, the other issue is.
That'll protect against ransomware attacks too.
Well, that, you know.
If it's done right.
The Dalton property, as you know, part of the initial leases with the Dalton, as you may know, part of the leases would be this Dalton property. It had us filling up the tanks with our contracted price. That's a no-no. I mean, you can't spend public money on private people. We were given a deal. You could've taken money off the rent if you wanted to do something. They still have to pay the contracted price. Not the contracted price, but the full, whatever price they give them. We changed the lease so that they now have to purchase their own oil, so we pulled our oil delivery away from that. They put their own oil. Just wanted to let you know, but the one lady that lives in one of the apartments down there, I said, well, one year, it was almost a year before they fixed a hole in the wall. They didn't have insulation, and she lost a lot of heat. And wanted to see whether or not we, the board, would authorize a reduction in her heating. I think that the contracted price was probably sufficient to overcome that problem. So it's up to you if you want me to work out a settlement with that or not, but I would just basically, I'm willing to just say.
How much do we make off that property?
I haven't done that analysis. I wanted that analysis done, but I think it's nine thousand. Now, the current leasing for the next year would be nine thousand off on one property. What's the other property? Eight, 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 we'll say about seventeen thousand. I roughly, I'll get you the numbers. But then you have the maintenance costs and anything that needs to be fixed and fixed and stuff like that, so.
Do we plow them too?
We, yes.
We do?
We do plow them? I've gotta look at the lease. You know, I can't remember if we said, I think we do.
We do, I know we do. Plowing the trucks are broken.
So anyhow.
For nothing.
It's, it's up to you, but my preference would be that we just say pay the contracted price. She's being hired at some payments, I mean, she's gonna pay off before. It's up to you guys. Do you work out something or?
I think you've got it under control.
They oughta, they oughta, they oughta buy their own oil.
Well, they are. That's a fair point.
You know, if there was a hole in the wall, she should've been.
She did.
Did she get a hold of somebody?
She tried to get it, but it wasn't fixed, yes.
Do we know?
There was a, there was a leak in the shower, and they kind of had to break in from behind to fix it, I guess, somehow. I don't believe it, I don't know.
Yeah, I know.
And then it was fixed, but they didn't put the insulation up, and there was still like loss of heat. It couldn't have been.
Much.
She said her furnace was running hot. I, I'm not doubting her, I'm just saying.
Is, is Gary looking at those, those units down there as part of the survey of the?
He will be.
Selfies, yeah.
But we also have the lease, the VC contractor purchasing agency. I told them, I wanted them to visit the inside of those buildings on a regular basis, let us know what's going on. 'Cause they were initially saying, well, 'cause I had gone up, it was my first visit, I told them what they had to do. They were tenants. And I said, but this is your job, not my job. I'm not gonna go up and do your job if you're getting paid.
The outside looks like hell around there. Put a plane.
What?
The outside of the area looks like.
Pretty sloppy.
And the porch was right full of.
Well, the porch, did he supposed to be taking care of that before the first?
But that's been, it's been that way for a couple of years.
Yeah, I know, but we're taking, we're trying to get that taken care of.
It did. It looked like, it looked terrible.
It did. I went up there and I said, this is, it was written up to as a, as a safety hazard.
I think it was brought to people's attention, but.
So that's that. And then there's a dock that's north of the dock on the loon, Camp Loon. There's a dock in front of Camp Loon. There was another dock that they were allowed to have access to, so just letting you know that. And the contract, I assume it's still acceptable.
Yeah, they had water access to it.
Okay, there's that. We have an A E D unit out here, and none of our staff have been trained on operating the A E D, but the guys have been through training. Just to let you know.
That should.
My chair.
Go ahead. Now, let me go back to the A E D. We offer training once a year, and every town employee is supposed to go there, and I don't know why.
I wasn't aware of that.
Well, you wasn't here, but the person, I believe, has made aware that, well, it's always been. Guys at the transfer station come. The cemetery committee guys come.
Well, maybe.
Town office did not come this year.
It may be that they were working in the town office and.
No, it was on a Sunday.
It was on a Sunday? Okay, I will be aware of that, and make sure that whoever puts it on lets me know. Okay, well, I will be aware of that, and make sure that whoever puts it on lets me know.
They do it, they call it Super Sunday, and there's sexifrostmen, and all that junk is in there, so it's.
It's not.
Super Sunday.
I could teach that.
I have this AED out here, I've been trained on using an AED, AED, I haven't used one for seven years, but it's pretty straightforward.
It tells you what to do.
Yeah, I know, but still, if you don't do it, you panic, and you shouldn't have some career areas.
Yes.
So, Super Sunday AED, Anthony, you're checking.
It's all, it's, you know, and it's open, there's a lot of different stuff that these guys, fire extinguishers, I mean, there's everything, that they need to be trained on.
Like, it's like I told them, I said, does anyone know how to operate the AED? No, so why don't we got it?
Just in case we come in and have.
'Cause I get older every, every day.
I'm worried about you guys, I'm worried about all you.
Thanks.
My chair.
You're looking at the mirror.
Yes, let's hit my chair.
Next Tuesday, a lady will come in to size me up, and then go forward. I got, I got a chair.
That's the lady, did you know we're gonna size him up?
I got a chair with nice rocket boosters on the rear.
Nice.
TV screen here.
Good boy.
He rolls it around, he's got a joystick here.
Panic button.
And he just lifts his feet.
That's the end of my updates, I believe.
Any questions for the town manager?
You brought up about the, in the road committee, about the crack connection. It was brought to our attention, what a crack.
Oh, yes, and I have not gotten Gary to fix that. Thank you very much for reminding me, I was gone the day after the.
No, I was just wanting to make something.
That's a, no, it's a good, that's a good reminder, I have it on my notes, it's just I.
Crack where?
There's a crack in the wall, the north wall of the sand building. It's about a third of the way down, it's about this height up, and, 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 you know, the crack goes up about this height, but it allows water to come right through the sand, the sand pile that's over there, and it's created some spawning issues. Gary had tried to fix it one time by plugging it with some seal or some sort, it didn't work. So, what you're gonna need is to try to chip that out and put in with. So, I, they had been meaning to, in fact, I told the committee that I was going to get that, send it to Gary to fix.
I'm gonna put that tape on TV. Well, that tape with his.
Any other questions for the town manager or anything else?
I got one other thing that I'll do. Anthony, and you, when you send out the binders and stuff, the, you still got Kerry's name in there? That oughta go away.